Oh, you've still got like.
I've still got like.
Unless it's been reset.
All right. Sure. We'll see.
Usually it's about 40 seconds behind everything.
Anticipation is too much. Making you nervous?
Yeah, that's like jumping now.
Gobble shy.
Hi.
It's gonna reset it.
Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, October 3rd, time for our regularly scheduled commission meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Today it is Commissioner Sessna's turn to do the invocation and the prayer.
Please raise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day that you have given us and the moisture that you provided us over the evening to help with our crops and our lawns and everything else that you do. Please watch over us during the meeting as we make decisions to move our community forward in a positive direction. Watch over our first responders as they're here to keep peace and keep us safe. And as we pray, amen.
Amen. Next up is approval of the minutes. Did anybody see any changes or corrections that needed to be made? Okay. All right, the stand is approved. Up is a public comment. This is a time for anybody to come up and talk about anything that is not on the agenda. If you do come up, you'll just state your name and you'll have five minutes. Do you have some? Okay.
Hi, you guys are today. My name is Anthony Molina, Garden City, and on my life. Today I would just like to bring up an entrepreneur. Instead of a food truck, what I got in mind is a moving bar. There's an outfit that comes out of Moscow meat area. They come up and they've done our Fiddy County fairs where they allow, whether they're beer gardens, a beer garden or whatever. So I wanted to bring that to the city of Garden City. And so I've kind of touched base with C. Lynn here at the city office, and I was told to come to the Dubraye Body to present, to see what your guys' thoughts were about it. I would get a catering license from the state of Kansas, which would allow me to sell of liquor anywhere. And that's where I would, my idea would be, say you had a birthday party and you invited me over to cater your party. And I would obviously stay off the city streets, be on private property if the city was to allow me. Obviously, in the county, that'd be a county thing. So I was thinking of the Allegra, because I'm familiar with that venue. That's my idea. So I was here to present my idea, to see if I can move forward before I start investing my license and all that good stuff.
So I know a lot of food trucks, you know, they generally have, I know that there is the incentive to, if you have a location and then later on you use that. Will you be working with any local vendors?
An established location?
Well, I'm saying like, will you be working with any of the local liquor stores? Or you have an established location where, because again, I mean, knowing that you'll have to store that and how are you going to make sure?
Right, so I've talked to ABC, where I've had kind of a storage place for it. They have to have access to that liquor at all times. The only time I want to access that liquor is if I had an event or establishment that would be welcoming, you know, for example, Fall Fest, if the city was to, the event would invite me down, that's when I'd provide, have the liquor. But yeah, ABC wouldn't be allowed to be in that area where that liquor's being stored at that time with my liquor license. Does that make sense? Did I answer your question?
Yeah, so I know that, yeah. I think partially, but the idea of like, a lot of the food trucks, they have like, actually a physical location and then they just kind of launch out of there, like, they use their food truck. When you talk about a mobile vending, where you have a location where you're actually selling, you know, on a normal basis?
No, I will not be conducting everyday business. I will just have a location where ABC is allowed to check inventory and to make sure I'm conducting business, but as far as everyday sales, no. They'll just be per event or per, you know, invitation to someone's celebration to that.
You're talking like a mobile food, not a food truck, but a similar concept or?
Same concept, but say someone has a foreign of their own and they just want me to host it. My idea is maybe having a minimum drink order where I can make money, because there's no loss like food, so I'm done food truck.
Sure.
But there's no lost liquor if it's not open, I'm going to use that again. So there's more profitability for me. So that's where my idea comes in, and that's why I'm here today, to see if it's even an idea that the city would allow me to do.
Well, I was going to ask legal counsel, don't we, there's some, we've got ordinances on this that would limit something like this, correct?
Not specifically on point. There are a couple of different pieces of our ordinances that regulate CMB and liquor, but not specifically to a, to a, as I would call it, like a booze truck or a liquor truck. And we would be happy if you guys want us to actually present to you on what our code does cover and what it doesn't cover. We would be more than happy to bring that in another meeting, maybe at your next meeting, so that if you have any questions of him or if he wants to give any additional information to staff, staff and myself could work on presenting that to you. Generally, there's, generally, this would be mostly regulated by ABC, and then locally it would be regulated by where it takes place and how it takes place. And then certain, under certain circumstances, on public property, they would have to come before the commission and ask for approval for that. But on private property, it would be a little bit more complicated on how that's regulated.
I would definitely conduct it. I do security also. Like I said, I'm in Garden City, and I'd love to keep our community safe, so I could conduct where I could have somebody watching where nobody would be leaving with open container, kind of do a beer garden if I was hired for a private event. So definitely that'd be my number one thing, keeping everybody safe, you know, and just having fun at the same time.
Because I know there's buffer zones around certain institutions where you have to stay, you know, within a certain buffer zone away, a church or the school. And so I'm wondering about how that looks. And I, so I appreciate, and I know the investment, you know, the, I like the idea that you don't have to have food spoilage, I think that saves money, but, and I mean, I'm sure there'll be more questions. I appreciate you presenting it to let us think about that, but yeah.
And that's where I stand today, if you guys just think about it and maybe have some thoughts, some input. I haven't got no initial investment yet, but I've talked to the state. I was the health inspector here in Western Kansas prior, so I do know some codes, law. So I have talked to the state. I am eligible for the license. It's a catering license, which would allow me to sell anywhere in the state of Kansas.
Are there other places that do this also, that we could also look and see how they're doing it too? Or is this kind of entrepreneurial?
The outfit out of Moscow, I don't know how their licenses are all working. So that's where I came about with an idea.
Moscow, Kansas?
Yeah. They come in, they've done our county events, and I've just been amused with it the past couple of years. And I said, why can't I do that here in Garden City? You know, whether I go head out to Scott City, at the lake, at the Bellevue Barn to do a wedding, or any venue that's came up. I think we have some farmers that's done a new venue out here on, not the farm, up here on Anderson Road, if I think I just read this last one again, so.
Sure.
So these are just my ideas, you know, I'm an entrepreneur, just like to keep my mind moving.
I wish your dick has something.
Questions, yeah, I don't know if it's Alicia or, so can our food trucks right now serve alcohol?
No.
If they, so there is an issue about that, so?
They just haven't gotten their license to do so. They've just, they've just set up as caterers in their, for food purposes. We haven't had them actually set up and ask this question.
I mean, there's nothing regulation wise that's preventing, or do we have something regulation that prevents food trucks from selling alcohol?
It's a little bit complicated and it's not exactly clear. ABC regulates that portion of it. However, then if you did like a food truck Friday and they were on a public street, then they would have to come before you and ask to sell or, you know, sell, consume, that sort of thing of liquor on a public, on public property. So then that yes would be regulated by our ordinance.
I'd like to see something prepared, just to kind of get straight what's, what works, doesn't work, what?
Yeah, I think so too.
What would need to be changed for this to work, what?
Yep.
Just to know where we're at.
I'm not going to work closely with you guys, with the start off, if you guys would make it work, I would be working close next to you guys and make sure everything works with the PD, with whoever needs to be involved with. I'm okay with that.
Because I know when someone leaves a bar and if they're intoxicated and something happens, sometimes the bar owner can be held liable if they've not done their due diligence. And with a private, I mean, with you being, that's again, I'm wondering what kind of liability that's going to mean for you and also the homeowner. When you have people, when you're hosting at your home, is that liable, you take on that liability or not? So just so everybody's aware, you know, what that looks like, I mean, with food, you know, food, I mean, I'm sure there's food poisoning, things like that, but I think with alcohol, I mean, the stakes are a little bit higher, so.
So it sounds like that will be something that we'll ask counsel to look into and present back to us at a later, at another meeting.
Do I need to be present at the next meeting, or can the city get back with me on a private basis, or how can we conduct that?
Does C. Lynn have your contact information?
She does.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right.
All right, thank you guys for having me.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 7A. This is to report out that we've completed our audit with the Department of Labor. The city elect to commend Human Resources Director Vogel, City Attorney Jennifer Cunningham, and others as well, who were able to gather this information for the Department of Labor and provide it for them. We did find that there was corrective action necessary, and that was early in the year, and we've implemented that. We've also done organization-wide training that Jennifer led, can tell you more about if you're interested. And so that's concluded. We've gone through the whole DOL process. They provided us notice of the assessment of civil penalty related to 2021, 2022, but have also considered the matter, they've reviewed our corrective action to have approved the correction, corrective action we've taken. So the civil penalty and the amount of $78,309 has been, has been paid. Items B through G are all staff reports. Do you have any questions over any of those items?
I was just interested, I know that we were at the airport, the grand opening, I just, I would love to hear just a little bit of how the airport is going with the new terminal and what that looks like, if that's possible.
Sure. Rochelle, would you come on up?
Good afternoon. Yeah, so the new overnight that we talked about.
I know that.
Went well. The original flight was delayed three hours, which put a little wrench in our move, but it went well. We're still trying to fix the little things that come up and finishing some punch list items that, overall, the terminal's working well. Everybody has access control. We figured out that system, we're figuring out cameras and how everything happens out of the new terminal. So the old terminal is demolished.
Wow, yes.
All the concrete fittings and everything have been demolished as well. They're going to let it dry out and then start working on the fittings for phase two. So in the meantime, they're working on the rehabilitation of the parlors remaining. So they're staying busy as many as they would be. Awesome.
It's pretty impressive when you drive up and you can see it from afar, so it's really neat.
Yeah, we had a lot of great comments about it.
Oh yeah, it's gorgeous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Rochelle. We did want to, this is kind of part managers' report, part meetings of note, town hall meeting, October would have a fifth Tuesday. It falls on October 31st. Gauging the commission's interest in having that town hall meeting or passing on one in October.
I would just pass on that one. It's more of a night for the trick-or-treaters.
Yes, sir.
I think that evening, if we had one, nobody would show up, so I would just, let's skip that one and we'll move on to the next one.
I agree. I have a neighborhood walk scheduled then.
Yeah, I was going to say, it really doesn't impede a lot of families from coming, so yeah, agreed.
I'm free.
You're the only one. May not be televised.
So you're giving them candy then?
Yeah, we could give candy throughout the commission.
There you go. No, that would be fine to skip it.
The rest of the meetings of note, just call attention to tomorrow's Department of Transportation Local Consult Meeting. Everyone is welcome. I would make a plug for that if you're affected in your life or work by transportation, which I think that's everybody. I would highly recommend you come and engage in the local consult meeting. There's only six of them in the state, there's only four of them in the western, or, there's only two of them in the western half of the state, the other four are in the eastern half of the state. So this is a rare opportunity, if you live in Western Kansas, to provide personal input into the, into the long-range statewide transportation plan.
Starts at nine o'clock tomorrow at the Clarion, correct?
That's correct.
It goes till noon.
All right. If you'd, if you want to move on to the appropriation ordinance, that's item 9A. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2588-2023A.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve appropriation ordinance 2588-2023A.
I'll second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following resolution regarding the 2023 general obligation bond sale. If approved, it would be resolution 3052-2023. Jer.
Good afternoon. The governing body has authorized proceed with the 2023 general obligation bond issuance by approving ordinance number 2966-2023 for the improvements to Kansas Avenue, the Eastside Pedestrian Pathway, Valley View Cemetery, and the land acquisition for housing development. The next step in the process is consideration and approval of this resolution authorizing the bond sale at 10:00 a.m. on November 7th, 2023. And the staffing project is authorized under the Stratech Way Act. The cemetery expansion project, the housing development project, and the pedestrian pathway park improvements are authorized under the Home Rule Amendment and Mary Carson City Bond Council prepared this resolution. So the alternatives before today are to approve resolution as presented or defer action to a later date. Staff recommends the governing body approve resolution as presented. And as a fiscal note, the debt payments for these projects are budgeted formally paid from the city's bond and interest fund over 10 years, starting next year, and the annual debt service for these issuance is estimated at approximately $670,000. Have you answered any questions yet?
Any questions?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution 3052-2023.
Second.
Been moved in second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jer.
Item 10B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution required by the Department of Revenue for a nonprofit organization to serve complimentary alcoholic liquor or cereal beverage on an unlicensed premises or business. If approved, this would be resolution 3053-2023.
Mayor and Commissioners, this item is, so as Matt said, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a resolution required by the Department of Revenue, specifically the Alcohol Beverage Control Division. Matt Guyer with Tumbleweed Festival, that's normally held in August, they're wanting to do a fundraiser, and they want that fundraiser to be at Roots Juice Company on Main Street, which is a non-licensed premise. And they'd like to, because it's for the arts, the state does require that an ordinance or resolution be passed by the governing body to allow them to sell on an unlicensed premise. So the governing body may approve this resolution as presented, or you can deny that resolution as presented.
I'm going to, we approve resolution number 3053-2023.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks.
Item 10C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be a resolution number 3054-2023 and abate nuisance conditions at 1608 York Avenue.
Okay. Mayor, we share, 608 York Avenue, we've got one black vehicle. We reach out to the owners of the property on two occasions, August 16th of this year, and September 1st of this year, unable to reach them. The alternatives today are the one, governing body to approve the tax resolution allows us to abate remediation issue. Number two, the governing body to not approve the tax resolution, staff's recommendations approving the tax resolution.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3054-2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a motor vehicle nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 3055-2023, and it would abate nuisance conditions at 1117 North Fifth Street.
Move to approve resolution number 3055-2023.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
So are the other vehicles okay on this property? Because it looks like just pieces of vehicles, so.
Correct. Two, at least, that were verified. Now.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution number 3056-2023 and abate nuisance conditions at 1219 Old Manor Road.
I move that we approve resolution number 3056-2023.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution. If approved, it would be resolution 3057-2023 and abate nuisance conditions at 1216 Ridgewood Drive.
Make the motion to approve resolution number 3057-2023.
It's been moved in second. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 12A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an implementation strategy and timeline for recommendations made in the 2023 pay plan update recently completed by McGrath Human Resources Group. The city of Garden City worked with McGrath Human Resources Consulting Group, or McGrath, in 2019 and 2020 to update the city's pay plan. Adjustments were made to allow the city to remain competitive in the market for employee wages. The city implemented the existing pay plan on January 1st, 2021. The recommendation given by McGrath was to make annual adjustments to the pay plan to adjust for typical inflation and to review the pay plan every three to five years to evaluate if further adjustments need to be made. Since implementing the pay plan in 2021, the economy has experienced above-average inflationary pressures. The city adjusted the pay plan on January 1st of both 2022 and 2023, but those adjustments were below the average inflationary rate at the time. To determine how the current pay plan compares to the market, the city has worked with McGrath to review the pay plan. The feedback provided by McGrath indicates the entire pay plan has fallen behind comparable positions in the market. McGrath has further identified specific positions which have fallen behind more significantly than most. McGrath has provided a recommendation that the city adjusts the entire pay plan by 3% and has provided a list of positions which they recommend be adjusted to a new grade or adjusted to a higher step within the current grade. Specifically, they identified that steps one and two of grades A through L are below market average and should not be utilized. The recommendation is that at the time of implementation, those employees in steps one and two of grades A through L shift up to step three. Employees in step three at that, at the time of implementation would be shifted to step four to assist in reducing some compression caused at the front end of the grade scale. As the pay plan analysis was still going, was still ongoing, and a final recommendation was not yet provided, the commission included $350,000, included $350,000 in the creation of the 2024 general fund budget as a placeholder for the anticipated upcoming cost. After analysis of the anticipated costs of adopting the full recommendations provided by McGrath, the $350,000 would allow for a September 1, 2024 implementation of these adjustments. If the commission were to choose to implement the adjustments at an earlier time, the additional cost impact on the budget, on the budget of the taxing funds would be as follows. May 1, additional impact of $313,000. January 1, 2024, additional budgetary impact of $645,000. Or November 1, 2023, implementation, $805,000. The 2025 budget will be created utilizing the new values for the pay plan after the adjustment. It would likely have the same total values budgeted regardless of the timing of implementation, as it would be expected that the update would occur sometime before January 1, 2025. McGrath also recommended that, for the time being, the city utilize a 3% annual increase to the pay plan to remain competitive with the market and not fall behind, as this has occurred over the last few years. If the city follows this recommendation, the salary pool increase utilized for the 2025 budget would likely be 4% to account for the 3% annual shift on January 1, and a 1% to account for the annual evaluation increases. Attached to this document was a copy of the city's current pay plan, a list of positions recommended for grade changes, and new positions with recommended grade placement, as well as a spreadsheet identifying the overall budget impact of the alternative start dates for implementing the proposed changes. The alternatives before you are many, but we've tried to kind of group them generally around what the 2024 budget allocation allowed for, and then increasingly more aggressive implementation dates up to what we would believe would be the earliest possible implementation date, which is November 1 of this year. So alternative one, the governing body may approve implementing the recommended pay plan adjustments effective 9/1/24, utilizing the $350,000 already included in the budget to account for the increased cost to the taxing funds. Number two is a 5/1/24 start date requiring an additional $313,000 to the taxing funds beyond what was allocated in 2024. Item three is a 1/1/24 start date, which would require an additional $645,000. Alternative four is a 11/1/23 start date, which would require an additional $805,000 between now and the end of 2025. The governing body may also not approve any of these recommendations and give staff further direction. So staff doesn't have a recommendation regarding the timing, but does recommend that the adjustments to the pay plan be adopted before January 1st of 2025. And we've broken down the fiscal impact and the alternatives and could also calculate the cost, the approximate cost of any other variation of the recommendation that you have.
So I appreciate all of the information, the background information. So on the one, and I'm looking at this one, man, I don't know what the chart is, the end of the, all of the limits. So the $350,000 that we've already allocated, that what you're saying, so we would have that, so to catch us up, if we started this year, we'd actually need $1,155,000 to bring ourselves current?
Correct.
And so as far as the $805,000, are there ways that, I mean, is there anything in the budget, or are there ways that we can, that we'd be able to fund that, not knowing that going forward, the budgets are already been, has already been submitted and there's, I don't think there's anything we can do with the budget at this point? So I'm curious about that.
Yeah, so you typically budget around 3.5 million in a cash carryover, and usually in the year, in a cash carryover, and this is just the general fund, but it's the largest of the taxing funds. And with the cash balance, $7 million, I think, most recently. So implementation of some change like this, or any other change for that matter, that's outside of the budget once you adopt it for the subsequent year, buys down that cash balance that you would begin creation of the 2025 budget with. So your January 1, 2024 cash balance would be less than it otherwise would be with this. There has not been identified line items that would go away, as this is a recurring expense, getting rid of a one-time, getting rid of a one-time, like a vehicle or a capital project that you're going to end up doing in, you know, two years from now or three years from now, it isn't, it doesn't gain you much. Most of our savings from year to year, the difference between that three and a half and whatever. and whatever we would in the, in the year, the actual cash balance, most of that's an unrealized salary and benefits. We budget for a full salary, we budget for full benefits in our departments.
So, the 3% and the 1% shift that occurs on their anniversary date per employee, or is that a specific date at each, each year?
If you're talking about the step increase, it's a 2% step increase, but it happens on their anniversary date. So, when we go to do the salary pool, the salary pool's a phrase that we use from a budgeting perspective. So, up until now, we've used a 3% salary pool, which is, accounts for a 2% on January 1, movement of the whole pay plan. And then the, the other 1% allows for the 2% step, because through the course of the year, our 400 people have anniversary dates that cover the calendar, they're pretty evenly spread, and so with 1%, you can, to the overall aggregate payroll, you can account for everybody's 2% step. The recommendation here would be that in the preparation of the 2025 budget, and this isn't a recommendation that I think you need to take up today, it's just kind of a placeholder in that discussion when we do get into the 2025 budget discussions, that will draft the city manager's proposed budget, absent direction from you otherwise reflecting, reflecting what the McGrath study is saying.
And I realize that pay and salary are one part of what makes, you know, you want to stay with an organization and work for an organization, and it has to be adequate. And I really appreciate the, the listing of the employee turnover, knowing, I mean, it's, I think it's excellent as far as this big of an organization, and, I mean, you've done a really good job in making this one of the premier organizations to work for. I think there's some really great benefits. And I also believe that your people are your biggest asset. I mean, we can have nice buildings, and we can have nice equipment, and I think that that's all provided, but again, your people are your biggest asset, so.
Bless you.
Thank you.
And I have provided to you on the bench, a request for employee turnover numbers over the last five years, and that's on the screen as well. Felt pretty consistent from a percentage standpoint, broken down by voluntary and voluntary and retirement. You can, you know, you can find human resource articles telling you which of those you should use to calculate turnover, but those are really kind of the three variables that you either include or choose not to include. So, broken down there is just, you know, complete somewhat, you know, the number of people that leave the organization versus were in the organization. The other is the number of people turning over not related to retirement, and then there's the number of people turning over not related to retirement or involuntary, so the voluntary turnover of the organization. So, yeah, those numbers are there. I would say they're consistent over those five years, and I would say they pattern in an area, 10% is considered to be really good, 15% is considered to be a good employer, and we're, we're within that. I would say our experience is less turnover than a lot of major employers in this area.
And I'm sorry to answer the question earlier, and I thought about it after the fact, but as far as the salary, does that include, like, the cost of the insurance and the other benefits that we provide?
No.
Okay. So then, so then this is just straight the actual pay and not all the other benefits?
This is, yeah, this is, this is pay. It might come in the form of, like, if there's an end of year, or if somebody receives a car allowance, that's treated as, that's treated as compensation in that salary line item, so it's salary lineup, not health insurance, not workers' comp insurance, or those types of things.
So, going back to the budget, the one that had the breakdown, for the $350,000 that we did budget, you were showing that we have to actually add an additional $7,000 to hit that for the September 1st. Is that, is that how I read that?
Yes.
Is that correct? That we have to, we have to increase it?
No. You go ahead, Drew. I wasn't saying no to you, yeah.
Incorporating the, the blue is the non-taxing funds.
Right.
The other, so your taxing number that we're looking at would actually absolve all of, the $350,000 would absolve all of doing this in September with an additional $18,000. So technically, you can, August 21st, or something, you could actually buy it off. So you wouldn't have any excess impact to your budget for the taxing funds if you chose the September 1st date. There would be an increase in the non-taxing funds, but those would be able to be resolved by the cash balance in those, those funds.
So you're saying if we waited till next year and didn't do anything this year, that's, that's how that would, that's how that would happen?
Yeah, if you chose to just stick with the $350,000 that you already budgeted, September 1st, you could make this change and not have to find any more dollars. If you want to do this in any accelerating path ahead of September 1st of 2024, we'll need to find some, some value, or like, if we go to the 2025 original budget in 2024 vice. So the two of the numbers listed in the orange is color.
And it would lower that cash balance, cash carryover balance that we would have going into the 2025 budget.
Correct. So you have the authority to, to make this decision. With that $3.5 million cash forward, our budget authority for the general fund is significantly higher than we typically expense. And so if you, if you decide to afford any of the alternatives we're going to make, they should not impact us to revise the budget, and so that's the state of the general fund, but it will lower that cash balance that we would anticipate having otherwise, that we'll have to adjust for, and start our 2025 budget a little behind where you would, without this decision being made.
Right. Thank you for that. I was looking at that night, trying to figure out all the numbers and colors and everything. So thank you for clarifying that for me.
And I have one more point, just to clarify.
Sure.
Choice question. So, like Matt mentioned, some of the benefits that don't tie to salaries, health insurance, workers' comp, those don't change, but these numbers do incorporate those benefits that would have an influx if we changed the salaries. So this number is fairly all-inclusive of salary and impacted benefits per salary value. And so if you chose to go for this, you wouldn't see an increased benefit cost of a whole present here today, that's incorporated into this.
Okay.
Things that use salary as a multiplier, like capers, cap enough.
Correct. Cap enough capers on a point, those will be part of.
Right, okay, yeah, because I know that, you know, as you make more, you can contribute more, and so that's why.
So we incorporated those, because those would shift up with the schedule.
Any other discussion?
Well, the only thing I'm thinking is, I mean, I'm accelerating it, you know, earlier than the 9/1 date. I mean, and so I'm vacillating between, you know, do we start this year? You know, I mean, and, you know, this, this is a, to going into this, it's already hard. I mean, rather than, or do we wait till January? You know, I mean, it, it's not as big a hit, it's about $200,000. Well, I'm horrible at math, so I'll, I'll have to let somebody else do that. But it's about $200,000 difference, if you did it in November rather than in January. But I think it also gives us a chance to prepare for the holidays and all of those kind of things. I mean, what's going to happen, you know, with that? I mean, and it could be we end up with, you know, a surplus, which I'm believing we will with, with sales tax and those things. I've seen our sales tax numbers, they have held steady, they've not, I mean, right now they're just level. I don't think they've increased at all, but I know that's a big part of our, you know, income and our budget, so that's just what I'm thinking, so.
With an 11/1, I mean, does that give staff enough time to be able to implement it by November 1st? Okay.
We want to sleep here. And I will mention, we're going live with our new payroll software.
Oh, wow, okay.
So from an administrative standpoint, there's a benefit to doing it November in the system that we already know. There's also benefit to doing it in the new system, right? So there's pros and cons either way, you see that up there. But yeah, staff could pull off a November 1st implementation date if commission decided they're up.
From a budgeting perspective, is it better to have those numbers at the end of the year versus the beginning of the year?
I don't think it's really going to make too much of an impact from a budget standpoint. We'll have a pretty, regardless of when you choose to implement this, we'll be able to figure this pretty solid. And I feel like our budgetary numbers with the trend that we've had the past few years, we can predict that fairly, fairly well regardless of what implementation date you choose.
And I think also, I mean, if, if we did it earlier, you know, I think it'd also be valuable in recruiting also, I mean, to, as a part of a recruitment and retention plan. I mean, and the difference of the $200,000 if we implemented a 11/1 rather than 1/1, I mean, is, it's, it's significant dollars, it is. But I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not saying I don't think of that, that significant, that it might be useful to really help stabilize our workforce here in the city, so.
I would entertain the motion for the governing body to approve implementing the recommendation pay plan adjustments effective 1/1/24.
Okay.
It's alternate three.
Is there a second? There's no second, then the motion does not go forward. Is there another motion?
I move that we approve their implementing the recommended pay plan adjustments effective 11/1/2023, approving an increase of $850,000 to the taxing funds revised budgets.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Or any discussion?
The only comment I make is, like, we feel comfortable knocking $800,000 out of our carryover for the 2025 budget, which, I mean, the difference for me is, I feel more comfortable going with either that May or that, if we're comfortable, for me, if we're comfortable going to the January, I mean, might as well just go to, go to November, and, I mean, like Commissioner Underwood said, that, that bump is not that much different compared to May to November, so.
I mean, it might mean that we don't do something next year that we would like to do, I mean, and that might mean a project gets, but again, if you have no workforce, or again, if we can't keep in, if we can't keep up what we already have, you know, and then that's what my concern is, and with the marketplace becoming so competitive, I mean, you're having a couple of major industries coming online next year, possibly, I mean, I would, I would hate to see that happen, and then, you know, we lose some of our best and our brightest, especially here when we rely on them so much, so. That's the only reason I'm recommending it earlier.
And it is an investment in the staff.
It is.
A big investment in the staff. Any other discussion?
I would just go back to, they're trying to implement a system at this time, and if we do the 11/1, plus, I kind of agree with Commissioner Dick, we're taking $805,000 out of, out of our reserve fund to meet this. Not that I'm against, against paying staff more, it's just, we've kind of set the budget where it's at. We need to look at our, you know, we kind of need, I understand this is an item that's kind to us, but we kind of need to look down the future and see what our other needs are as well. But I really wouldn't want to have staff sitting here or sleeping overnight trying to implement this, you know, they're already, they're already.
They're always trying to give them another 30 days.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're already maxed out trying to get this implemented.
Well, then the 1/1, so, me too, we can go back to that.
That's, that's my concern on that.
So are there things next year that we'll be looking at implementing that would possibly not be able, or that you know of, Jared, or?
As massive, we haven't identified anything specific as we get into the budget cycle, similar to what we've done in the past, where we come kind of the 90% completed, here's the big ticket items, here's the things that are operating, that you as a policy decision get to make, which is not, we do the same. What that will come out to look like, we don't, we don't quite know yet. This budget cycle, we will put some funding aside for downtown developments, some other projects, some other initiatives, a capital improvement plan, sometimes that could be the ultimate, it's really up to you guys to determine what you want to see. We do, as Commissioner, as you guys have said.
Somebody.
I'm trying to think who said it. Sales tax has been fairly steady, like, we have businesses open, and that goes back up, that may absolve some of this. There are a plethora of factors that by the time we get to next year could go the right direction and make this less of an impact, but this is more so the worst-case scenario if all things considered, this is what you need to understand your budget on. And I will say that if you do choose on November 1st, we really can accomplish that, we won't be sitting here. If you do choose to go.
Just on the weekends.
We really presented an option.
Right, yeah, that's what, I trusted you that way, too, yeah.
The more, the most expensive thing is to hire new people, have to train new people.
Exactly.
I mean, we have somebody coming in saying, as an expert, I mean, we hired them to say, what do your, what does your pay need to be? And that wasn't, what does your pay need to be in a year from now? It's what should be now, so the more I think about it, the more I'm like, you know what? I mean, the thing that makes the city work is the employees. And, and if we have experts coming in and saying there needs to be an adjustment.
I can predict some element of projects you could identify, but during your budget cycle, from the time I present you in May, from the time you're August, things shift so much that I feel that would be a misleading picture to give you, that's why I put kind of some tier in the lab pay board. But I do know that the city has a history of accomplishing a successful budget and finding a way to accomplish great means, and we would continue to do so.
That's why you are an incredible finance director. That is such a smart answer, so, yeah.
And it's a pretty conservative estimate, too, so.
And I do think as far as the community, we are, we are moving forward, and I think that, you know, this is, I mean, we continue to grow, but that way, but again, I, so, yeah.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second for alternative four, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, are you ready to vote? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, four to one.
Thank you. Item B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the grant in the amount of $2 million from the Kansas Moderate Income Housing American Rescue Plan Act Grant Program from the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. It's my understanding that we're removing this item and the next one?
That's correct.
All right, so items B and C, we are removing from the agenda. And hopefully bringing that back to you soon. Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the hangar classification and rate structure. I lost my place. For T-hangers located at Garden City Regional Airport. For sure.
Good afternoon. So the hangar classification and rate structure, just make sure that the airport, which is a federally obligated airport, completes all their grant assurances. So the airport advisory board and staff have been working on this for several months now, and so what is being presented to you clarifies and clarifies the hangar use and eligibility for specific hangers, and then also increases the rate structure. So, in general, a primary hangar is going to be the viols, and to be in a primary hangar, you're going to have to provide an annual aeronautical, sorry, annual inspection of your aircraft. And that shows that the aircraft's active, and so it goes into the primary hangar secondary, it can be a flexible, you can have an active aircraft or a non-active aircraft, and then storage, what would be for storage depending on if it was a non-aeronautical or aeronautical use. So with that, the tenants, if this is approved, tenants in the viols would be notified, and then they would have 30 days according to their lease agreement to provide that annual inspection for their aircraft, otherwise we would be able to allocate them to a secondary or hangar and/or a storage hangar that would be identified. And then the rate structure increases rates from anywhere from $15 to $50 per month depending on the hangar and the hangar use. And we do also have flexibility to work with our tenants. If they are in a hangar that's going to increase $50 per month, we can look at another hangar that would just increase the rent by 15. So we have the flexibility to work with hangers on the classification of their hangar tenants, on the classification of their hangers, and/or the rental amount. Is there any questions?
So, did you look at other comparisons to other airports?
Yes, so comparatively to the other airports, that's what the airport advisory has been looking at and evaluating. So, this is long overdue, honestly, and so it brings us up into a more competitive level that's still a bit lower end. So the thought process going behind this is we would implement this hangar structure as well as the rates this time, and then in six years, in 2030. as well as the rates this time, and then in six years, in 2030.
That goes fast.
We could reevaluate and then continue to do it every two to five years. Just because this year is such a big jump that we can kind of meet those rate increases and then give the tenants a little time and then reevaluate kind of like on a two to five year period.
Okay, any other questions?
And then this would go into effect like it says on the memo on January 1st.
January 1st, yeah. This one here went to increase.
And the airport advisory board recommended approving, okay.
Yes, they do.
I move that we approve the hangar classification and rate structure for the I-hangers located at Garden City Regional Airport. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rochelle.
T-hangers.
So it looks like our next item, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the, I can't read this.
Remote control, two remote.
Mowers. To approve the purchase of two remote controlled mowers for $125,800 that were not requested or authorized in the 2023 or 2024 annual budgets. And you have Tyler here to represent.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So we have some portions of the drain ditch D1 that has some very steep banks. It's tough to mow those areas with the current equipment that we have. Our existing boom mower, it's about, it's a little over 25 years old. It's had handful and mechanical issues, and most recently a transmission issue that's been, we're having this tough time finding parts for it. The other mowers that is used in the street department cannot access these areas, so it has to be completed, if completed, all by hand. Red Equipment LLC out of Independence, Missouri, they were invited to come out to serve the city on August 30th. They demonstrated the capabilities of the RC R52 new mower. And we, we tested that in some of the toughest areas that we, you know, knew of. This air, this mower is capable of cutting about inch and a half saplings, little small trees. It's remote controlled, it has a 27 horsepower air-cooled Kawasaki engine. Comes with a two-year, 400-hour warranty. And the public horses and utilities department did not budget for this specialized equipment, therefore are requesting the governing body, governing body's consideration and authorization to purchase this equipment outside of the normal budgeting process. Staff did receive two bids from different vendors for this equipment with Red Equipment meeting the specifications and being the lowest price. So if the governing body authorizes this purchase, the funding would come out of the Special Traffic Way Fund, which currently has an expected cash carryover balance of, for 2024, of $1,249,018. One of the mowers is currently in stock in Kansas City, and the other has, I heard back today, it's about a four-week lead time. With the two mowers, staff feels confident that we could effectively mow the ditch areas plus other areas in the winter to clear them from all the weeds and brush that we've really seen with, with all this terrain that we've got in this chair. It's been pretty tough to tackle some of these areas. We do have a video, it's about a 30-second video of this mower in action, like you share.
Isn't that awesome?
That sounds amazing.
There we go.
There we go.
Click on it.
Is this here?
Yeah, so this is just right there off of Taylor Street.
It's not smooth.
Taylor, the tally trailer.
Yeah, it's not moving, but.
Hold on.
Oh, got it.
Start over.
I heard it, it sounded great.
I was pretty impressed.
Yeah, the Kawasaki engine, yeah. Oh, there it goes.
So right there is at about a 40-degree slope, this thing will go up to 50 degrees.
What is our steepest ditch slope that we have in town?
Yeah, it's going to be around 45, 40, it's not going to be 50, but we just wanted to make sure.
Right.
Could tap something like that. So two options here, it's, one, the governing body may authorize the purchase of the two R52 remote operated mowers from Red Equipment LLC for a total price of $125,800. Or two, the governing body may choose to not authorize this purchase. Recommendation, staff recommends the governing body authorizes the two purchases, the remote control mowers from Red Equipment LLC. As fiscal note here, if purchase is approved today by the governing body, the projected cash carryover balance in the Special Traffic Way budget at the end of 2024 would be $1,123,200.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase for the two R52 remote operated mowers from Red Equipment LLC.
A second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just, I was kind of looking at one of these for my Christmas gift this year.
So it's half that amount.
But I was looking at the specs, I mean, I know there wasn't kind of a side-by-side comparison on the specs, and it says like the other one from Key Equipment does not meet all, all specs. And I read that one, that one only has like a four-and-a-half gallon diesel tank. The other one had a 12-gallon tank or something.
Correct.
The other difference was of the slope, which was a 60-degree slope versus this one that has the 50, 50 degrees. So what was, what was the other things that didn't meet spec on that?
Yeah, so our fleet mechanics, they, they got eyes on this unit when it came over to demo in August, and they're real familiar with this engine Kawasaki. It's kind of a standard engine in some of our zero turns. They just replaced one at the cemetery, I believe. So they were real confident in that engine already. We can get something in here, you know, it is diesel engine. You know, didn't want to kind of get something oddball, I'm not saying it's oddball, but, you know, anything different than what we're already familiar with. There were another, you know, a few other different specs that they didn't meet. You know, the, you have fuel tank, it's only four gallons, you know, versus 12.4 gallons. Wouldn't want to have to go that thing after a couple hours and get out there and get the job done. Yeah, there was a few other things, the warranty, it was, it was a little different as well, so.
Okay.
We did a little research and felt comfortable and confident that this company will back up their warranty and provide that service force.
So on normal zero-turn machines, they also cut while you're going in reverse. Is that the case here too, or does it?
Yeah, it does, in reverse as well.
Nice.
That's all I have, I've just, yeah.
We know what to get you for Christmas.
That's a pretty impressive mower knowledge there, right?
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the mayor to sign the certificate to the Director of Accounts and Reports for the Kansas Department of Revenue regarding sales tax revenue reduction due to changes in state sales tax and food, for food and food ingredients. Jared?
Again, as provided in Section 13 of 2022 House Bill 2510, the governing body of each city or county that is established to start bond district is required on July 1st, 2023, and January 1st, 2024 to certify that the Director of the Accounts Reports did not equal to the amount by which revenues realized from sales tax was reduced for the preceding six-month period due to legislative changes in the state's sales tax for food and food ingredients. The reduction amount for the Garden City Starbuck Project as provided by the Kansas Department of Revenue for a period of January through June of this year was $9,999.39. The alternatives before you today are to authorize the mayor to sign this certificate, certification notice to the Kansas Department of Revenue, or to not authorize the mayor to sign this certification notice to the Kansas Department of Revenue. Staff recommends the governing body authorize the mayor to sign this certificate notice to the Kansas Department of Revenue. As a fiscal note, upon submission of this certificate notice to the Department of Revenue, the value of the reduced revenue will be distributed to the Kansas Department of Revenue and applied to these sales tax proceeds account for the Sports of the World Starbuck Project. These proceeds are used in the debt service of the Starbuck, so there's no fiscal impact for the city as a whole.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the certificate of notice to the Kansas Department of Revenue.
A second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks.
Mayor Commissioners, I don't anticipate any action following item G, so if you'd like to take up the consent agenda and then the commission reports, we could wrap up the broadcast and conclude the meeting with the executive session. Is that all right?
Sure.
All right, the consent agenda, if there's no items that you'd wish to remove and discuss separately, the appropriate motion would be H1 through 3.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, H1 through 3.
A second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, commission reports. Commissioner Seston.
Last week, I was on the governor's panel discussing, discussing the Medicaid expansion, so Matt was on that panel as well as other local representatives, so. Good discussion with the, the governor on that. Attended a number of grand openings of expansion of businesses and the new walk-ons yesterday, so welcome new businesses to our community that helps us to become a destination location. Just want to reiterate the KDOT listening tour again tomorrow at 9 o'clock at the Clarion Inn, and it goes till noon, so this is a good time to come out and let your voice be heard on what you think of transportation. And that's pretty much everything from sidewalks all the way to roads and airports. Just want to remind everybody, tomorrow's going to be Walk to School Day, so schools are going to have a number of events going on, especially the elementary, so just be mindful of parents, students, as well as staff walking their kids, the students to school, so just remember to slow down and be watchful for the students. Also wanted to mention, today we had a special event and a surprise for one of our teachers at the high school. Don Merle is a welding teacher at Garden City High School, and he was named a $50,000 winner for the Harbor Freight Tools for Schools Prize for Teaching Excellence Today, that was this morning. He won $35,000 for his school's program, and $15,000 goes to him. And they actually awarded 1.5 million out to 25 different high schools today to trade teachers and their programs across the United States. So Garden City was one of those, and really great event. And glad that we have such great teaching staff here in our community that prepares our student speaker ready. Good pre-meeting this morning. Lot of good information on how to, on wastewater and wastewater treatment, just ways to continue to move our community forward in a positive direction. Reminder tonight, there is a city commission debate that starts at 6 o'clock in these chambers, or you can pick it up live online. And then, in the Garden City area, Chamber of Commerce is hosting that event. They did make a change to the school board event. It was supposed to be at the high school, but there's some technical issues, and so they're moving it to these chambers, and that'll be Thursday at 6 o'clock here in these chambers, and it'll also be broadcast and streamed live as well, if you cannot make it here in person. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ortiz.
Yeah, ditto on what Commissioner Seston says. Took a lot, loved what I had, but, yeah, just thanks for all the, all the community and people involved for coming and showing what, what Fred Jones had to offer for as far as a, a, a plan of action to take for, for some of those issues in the sewer system, so. Also, like, just say prayers for the families this weekend who had that fire. Just thankful that the city, the fire department was able to reach out to City of Holcomb to get help over here to assist with that, but, yeah, there was tragedy in that event, so prayers to those families and prayers to anybody who is, is recouping on, on, on that event, so. Also, yeah, I was going to talk about the change, but, yeah, just, there was a good, there was a good forum last night. If you didn't, if you weren't here, it's also, they're also recorded live, so if you miss them, you can go back and kind of watch those again, so. With that, that's it.
All right, Commissioner Dick.
All right, like I said, a great pre-meeting. Going to talk about some forward progress on that issue with, with the sewer system and seeing how we can fix that in the future. It's going to be a lot of what Commissioner Seston and Ortiz already said. It is really important for everybody to get out to KDOT, it's a meeting tomorrow, talk about our, our issues. It's one of the few times that KDOT gets out our way, so it's good to show up and, and talk to them in person, or at least out in our area instead of up in Topeka. Tune into the city debate, remember, general election is November 7th, so make sure that's on your calendar. And then also, keep in mind, and not just with Walk to School tomorrow, but just in general, be on the lookout for pedestrians just when you're driving, especially now that it's getting pretty nice in the evening. Just, there's been a little bit more reasons for concern to just making sure that, that when you're driving around, just make sure you're paying attention to your surroundings around you, bikes, cars, other people, so. That's all I got. Thank you.
Commissioner Andrew.
So I just want to say thank you also for the report from Fred. It was really, really well done, and I, and I just want to thank you, Mayor, for the leadership you took. After the town hall meeting, I, you know, oftentimes you wonder, so what's next? And I thought your, the leadership you took at the last meeting and talking about, hey, let's do something, let's talk about what's next. And so I thought that was really, some really viable alternatives for solving a lot of these problems. I also want to thank the residents who attended. I know sometimes the meetings are not a convenient time, and a lot of people work, and so, I mean, that means they have to take time off from work, and so, you know, being able to do that and dedicated to do it, I think makes a big difference. I also just want to lift up prayers for the families, you know, I know oftentimes when a fire, it's often, it's oftentimes just physical damage, and that, that, those things can be replaced, but people cannot, and so I just, you know, it really made me think about how important the job as a firefighter is, and then also how important it is, is how we as a community come together to help those who have tremendous loss, especially in that. If you cannot make tomorrow's, tomorrow, there is another, there is another KDOT consult in Hays. It's on the 10th, so again, you know, sometimes if it's, if it's too short notice for tomorrow, there is one on the 10th, and like Matt said, that there are only two in our area, so at least make one of those. I was really excited about the airport event when I came in driving from Southwest Kansas and saw there. It's just kind of this shining, this beacon thing out there, and it's, it's gorgeous, it really is. It is very impressive. And the last thing I want to say is this weekend, so watch out for slow runners, slow walkers. There's the Legacy Race this weekend, and so it's going to be, if you want to avoid a lot of people, there's over 600 people involved, if you want to avoid a lot of people, don't go around the hospital this weekend or the zoo until after around 10 o'clock, but, so that's happening too. And there are so many opportunities to do things here in Garden City. There, there's always something that's going on, so that's all I have.
Yeah, the pre-meeting, I'm just, I mean, I was very happy to know that, that action was taken to really look at the problem, and not just, not just looking at it through a small lens, but looking at it through a big lens, and looking at it not just short-term of, let's fix this area, but really kind of a big picture of really, this is, you know, this is a community issue, and here are the implications if we do this and this, and. So it was well thought out, and I am just so grateful that we have staff on, that we have staff here who know who we can consult and who can really kind of get together and look at the issues and kind of help guide the commission and help us understand, really, the big problem and kind of the nuts and bolts of what some of those issues are. Vice Mayor Ortiz and I, along with Matt and Mike Mayor, went on a tour of the Dogwood Energy Facility. Was it two weeks ago? And it's an interesting facility, it's a very large facility, 675-megawatt facility that the city of Garden City, you know, is part owner of through KMEA, and so it was an impressive tour to be able to, to see that facility and, and just hear a little bit more about interconnection and the transmission and stuff. Enjoyed the opening of walk-ons yesterday and the opportunity to welcome them to Garden City. As Commissioner Seston said, you know, it is a great opportunity, and one more thing that we have that will bring people here to Garden City, make it a great place to live and work and raise your family, and, and the parking lot has been packed. The parking lot was busy before, but it's really packed now. And so it might be a little long before you can get in, but still try to get in. Also, I did have a chance to visit with some of the firefighters yesterday at that ribbon cutting. I just, I really wanted them to know how much we appreciate what they do. And actually, there was a firefighter who had smoke inhalation, and so our prayers really do go out to our first responders, but then also to the families that were impacted in that fire. It's, it's unfortunate when things like that happen, but knowing that we have people who are willing to go into the fire and, and work and, and do those things, no questions asked, it's just impressive to me, and so prayers for our first responders. to me. And so prayers for our first responders every single day, but especially during times like this. So, right. With that, we'll look at executive session. Matt, how long do you-
Commissioner, this is item G. Staff's requesting the governing body consider an executive session pursuant to KSA 75 dash 4319B1 pertaining to personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Because of this matter were discussed in an open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. And the specific purpose is to discuss the terms of the city manager's employment. And it'll be 10 minutes, I think, and for assistant, or I'm sorry, city attorney Jennifer Cunningham and myself.
I make the motion we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 75 dash 4319B1 pertaining to personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. It'll be, we'll start at, when do you want to take a break?
2:15.
2:15 for 10 minutes to go to 2:25. We'll have city, and the purpose of this is to discuss the city manager's employment. We'll have city manager Allen, as well as city council Cunningham in the meeting.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries and we will go into executive session at 2:15.